Yeah, I'm Ben Gray, running for city council District 2. I've been here before, know what I'm doing, ready to go. Originally from Cleveland, Ohio. Ooh, man, since seventy-one, nineteen seventy-one. I was in the military prior to that. The military is what brought me here. I've never been anywhere other than North Omaha. Even when I was in the military, when I was able to get off base, I moved to North Omaha. That's where I've been since seventy-one. You know, because you have the ability in Omaha to really get some things done if you have the contacts, if you have the collaborations, if you know, you know, a number of the people involved that could get things done. And I have those contacts, I have those collaborations, so it's really easy for me, you know, in the scheme of things, to get things done, to move things forward, because I've got the connections to do that. And that's what I like about Omaha. There are people here who are just giving people, who want to see a difference, who want to see a change. They're all not black or white or anything like that. There's just a variety of ethnic groups that want to see some things get done here and are willing to put in the blood, sweat, and tears if necessary, or the dollars if necessary, to make a difference here. And you've seen in North Omaha, over the past twelve years, sixteen years, you've seen significant development and growth in this community that I've been a part of for most of the time I've been here. And those things are visible. When we have a, our slogan is "Proven Leadership, Visible Results." It's more than just a slogan. I've proven that I can make things happen. I've proven that I can get results. I've proven that we could change the face of North Omaha if we work at it. So those are the things that I consider to be, you know, important elements of what makes me a good candidate and a good councilman. Part of the reason that I'm running is because we have to find a way for young people to be prepared to run for office. And I'm going to be doing that through the Empowerment Network and perhaps maybe the Urban League, working with young people to get them prepared for office. And not get them, not the nuts and bolts of doing this, but the insider things that go on that they normally don't hear about. Those are things that we have to address with young people moving forward, and that's part of my intent for running for office again. We gotta train young people up so that they're ready to go, rather than a piecemeal approach at this, and then once you get on the council through some sort of popularity contest, and that's what voting seems to be sometimes, is popularity contests, rather than people sitting down and doing their democratic duty to look at each candidate and what they bring to the table. The other thing, though, was, you know, the last four years have been kind of stagnant. There's not been the kind of development that I would like to see, there's not been the kind of hands-on kinds of things that need to be done that I would see that I was engaged in. So, you know, looking at the last four years, you know, I have concerns about what didn't happen as opposed to what did. I have concerns about the relationships that have been developed, or the lack of relationship that has been developed. And I don't know how you get that back once you lose it. So when I looked at those factors, it made it important for me to make an important decision as to whether I was going to run or not. And in this environment, with the kind of things that we see going on in Washington, DC, and in Lincoln, I think it's critical that you have someone who has the skill, the knowledge, the ability, and the contacts to address a lot of what's going on in a number of ways. And I still have the contacts for doing, you know, the kinds of things that you need to do to create economic development. But it's just those experiences, it's just those connections, and the fact that, you know, North Omaha kind of, in these last four years, didn't quite meet up to the standards that I think this district meets and needs. So that's the reason why I'm running. Well, the city council primarily is like every other legislative body, we control the purse strings. Okay? So you can, you know, I mean, every year the budget comes out, we have an obligation to approve the budget, add to, take away from the budget if necessary. So we control, the general theme is that legislative bodies control the purse strings. And that's what the city council does. In addition to that, we have an obligation to be in our districts and making sure that if there are issues that need to be addressed, that we're in the district addressing those issues. You know, there's a variety of things that come up, some of them major in terms of housing and so forth, and others are not quite as, not quite as upfront as you would think that they are, but for the most part, you know, weeds, litter, you know, problem properties, abandoned properties, neglected properties, all of those things are things that the city council, a city council member ought to be addressing. Looking at the streets, reporting back to, you know, Public Works and to the mayor, you know, what you see on the streets out here. You know, I had concerns about several of the streets out here that hadn't been resurfaced in a number of years, and so we engaged in a process to get a lot of that done. When I was on the council, we improved all of our parks in North Omaha, especially Miller Park. Miller Park is a glowing example of what can happen when you do something right. But Coontz Park, Fontanelle Park, the Omaha Country Club, I mean, all of those places are, you know, we've done quite a bit of work to bring those parks up to par. And I saw a little slippage this year that made me a little concerned, especially around Fontanelle Park. Not as well kept up as it has been in the past, you know, especially when I was on the council. So it's something, you know, I keep an eye on the parks, I keep an eye on the streets, you know, I keep an eye on buildings that are potentially hazardous. And, you know, keeping in mind also that I brought the Omaha Land Bank here, created the land bank. I looked at a variety of them around various cities and adopted one that I thought best fit the city of Omaha. It is now something that the Nebraska Legislature feels important enough to do that, you know, they have, and a couple of years ago, they passed legislation for regional land banks. So now we have regional land banks across the state. And I just want people to keep in mind, I'm the one that brought it here. So, you know, and I think it's doing well. We've got a number of, you know, minority developers now that are working on building, you know, working on building housing and so forth. And I think we, I think the opportunity is there for, to do some really great things with that land bank. And I'm very pleased to see a number of young entrepreneurs looking at the land bank as an opportunity for learning how to do home building and developing your own portfolio for home building. I think all of that's important and necessary. You know, it's kind of a broad question, you know, and I'm used to answering broad questions, but, you know, I want to try and get as specific as I can. There are two things that concern me, the lack of affordable housing and homelessness. And homelessness is on the rise. And what's really key, and what's really important, and was really bothering me to a certain extent, is you have families that are going into homelessness, entire families. We've got to address that some kind of way. And like I said, looking at things at the state level and at the national level, where it looks like they're gonna fire everybody, half of everybody that's in government, all of that borders on the ridiculous, borders on the ridiculous to me, in addition to it being illegal. But, you know, that aside, we've got to do some things to make sure that we're addressing the most significant problems that we face, and among them are affordable housing. I addressed it to a certain extent with the old Wintergreen property, the old Maya Park property. You know, I was able to convince people that that needed to be, rather than do some other apartments or some other kind of thing there, that needed to change, that identity needed to change. And it needed to be single-family homes. And Habitat for Humanity stepped up to the plate, and what you see over there now is nothing like what it used to look like. I mean, these are homes that are well taken care of, well-built, streets that have been paved and so forth. So you've got that piece of it, but, you know, we have to look at other places. The land bank is also an opportunity to do, you know, housing developments and so forth. It's, you know, it's a good opportunity for small contractors and small people who want to be developers to find their niche in something like that. So, you know, there's been a variety of tools that we have used to address this problem, land bank for being one of them, several other areas where we've looked at, Holy Name Housing, OEDC, Habitat for Humanity, I mean, the three major nonprofits here that do home building. We need to continue to support them and help them grow as well, and help provide them with resources so that we can do what is necessary, and that is building affordable housing. I think right now, being a part of the Empowerment Network is really key, and being a part of the 360 Violence Prevention is also key. And like, I don't know if I mentioned it before, but among the things that I've been doing since I've been out of office, one is I've been on the, I've been on the MECA Board for nearly three years now. Been a member of the Omaha Douglas Building Commission now for about a year and a half. I just say those things because people ask questions about what have you been doing? Those are the things that I've been doing. But what I'm most proud of, of what I've been doing, is going out of town with members of the network to explain how 360 works. And we've got a number of cities now that have bought into our theory about violence prevention. And Kansas City being one of them, Tulsa being another one, Lansing, Michigan, we've got a number of places where we've been throughout these last couple of years, you know, where we've, where we've talked to them about the 360 violence prevention, talked to them a little bit about how the network works. And in several instances, several cities have picked up not only on our 360 violence prevention, but also how the network operates as well in the community. So those are the things that I've been doing, and those are the things that I'm very proud of. And I'm most proud of the fact that our violence prevention, our violence numbers are almost unheard of in almost any other place. I mean, nineteen homicides for a city of nearly 500,000 people, that's almost unheard of. You know, in Kansas City, for example, they had a 25% reduction last year, but they still had over a hundred shootings. They're the same size and the same population as Omaha, you know, but they have a much more significant violence situation that they're working on, and they're starting to get a handle on it using the methods that were established here in Omaha. Tulsa, Oklahoma, the same way. Their numbers were out of sight for a while, but now they're starting to reduce their violence, and they're using our method to do it. So when the mayor and others tell you that cities are coming here, absolutely. I mean, we've had over a hundred cities make contact with us, we've had over fifty cities that have brought their staffs to look at what we're doing in Omaha. And when they drive through North Omaha, they see something a whole lot different. They, they want to know how we're doing what we're doing. Okay? So it's a matter of perspective when you look at things, for example, you know, when you look at violence prevention. People come here and they see the number last year of nineteen, and so far they see, what, maybe three so far this year? They're amazed at what we're doing, but as they've learned how to use the 360 method, where we meet every week, you know, with police officers in attendance, community folks, elected officials, and others, when you see all of those people involved every week in addressing problems in the community that relate to violence and policing, you know, it is a model that other people are looking at around the country. It is a model that we stand on here, and it's not perfect. I mean, we have issues, and sometimes we have tough conversations. But at the end of the day, we're able to manage where we are right now and continue to improve on our statistics as it relates to violence prevention, gun violence, and all of those kinds of things. All of our violence numbers are down. Well, we continue to look at things that are needed in the community, for one. One of the things that we addressed early on while I was on the council was, we didn't have any coffee shops in North Omaha. Okay? We have a number of coffee shops now because we made that happen. And people went into business and were successful in it. So we have a number of coffee shops here now, or places for people to get coffee. It may not seem like a big thing, but I heard about it so often on the council, when various people would call me to talk about, "We don't have any coffee shops." I said, "Okay, let me work on that." And we got that done. But economic development is always kind of, in some ways, a moving target, but in other ways, for people who know, who have the connections, who know how to make things move and get them done, economic development sometimes is a challenge, but it's also a great opportunity. And you always have to look out for opportunities to do that. And then you gotta assess the needs in the community of what's needed. You know, like that one time, those coffee shops, I know we still have issues with what people perceive as a food desert. We've tried to, we've tried to manage that a little bit with Walmart and working with our convenience stores, making sure that, in addition to the normal things that they have, that they have fresh fruits and vegetables to go along with that. So, you know, those are among the things that we work with the Douglas County on to make sure that these convenience stores, those that wanted to participate, and most of them did, you know, had fresh fruits and vegetables. So, but again, economic development is constantly, you're looking out for it, and you're looking for ways to continue to develop. And as you look at things, when I talk about coffee shops, I was talking about it with a number of developers. And when you talk with these developers, they say, "Okay, well, we didn't know that at first, so let's see what we can do about that." And so, number of places we did that. But again, economic development is a moving target, it's something that I'm always on the lookout for. I was close to a really nice restaurant to, here on 24th Street, up at the more southern part of 24th Street. And some things happened, and it kind of fell apart, but it fell apart more to do with things that we couldn't control. And businesses have to go where businesses feel comfortable. And they weren't comfortable at this point in time. I'm hoping to revisit that again, because I think they would be a really, I think they would really benefit from that area with the North Omaha traffic as well as the Creighton traffic. I think that would be a good opportunity. But there are other opportunities out there, we just need to keep looking and keep talking to our developer friends about, you know, things, needs that we have in North Omaha, and how those needs can be addressed. And among the things I want to do is I want OPBD to finish what they started when I began talking with them. One of the things we wanted to make sure that they did was they went away from coal. And so now, most of their stacks, I think there are like about three left that still use coal, but the rest of them are using natural gas. And that, and I don't think that's out there like it needs to be, because we've been working on this for a while, and I started working on it as soon as I got on the council, because we had to address the environmental issues. As you know, or may know, Omaha, you know, because of the lead from Osarco and OPBD and others, you know, this is one of the largest superfund sites in the country. And so we had to do some really yeoman work to clean up yards and neighborhoods and so forth. And we're still doing that out near the airport today. There's still some problem areas where we still have a lot of lead in soil. And so we still have, we have to address that. But in terms of the environment, I hope people will recall that Council President Festerson and I introduced the plastic bag ordinance. We tried to eliminate plastic bags from the waste stream here. We were not successful, but it wasn't, it wasn't because we didn't try, and it wasn't because we weren't out there having the public aware of what was going on with these plastic bags, and how, how they get into the water, how they get, fish get trapped in them, various other animals get trapped in them. It was, it was, it was an opportunity to make a move, not only to make our mark on the environment, but also to protect wildlife. And so we introduced that. Like I said, we didn't get it passed, but it's, you know, a lot of those things are worth visiting again. But we have made some strides, especially with OPBD in terms of, their coal-fired plant is now operating, I mean, I think most of the towers now are operating with natural gas. They still have a few that are coal-fired. And from what I understand, from what I understand at the national level, what they're going to do, we've got a president that probably wishes OPBD would go back to all coal. I don't think that's gonna happen here, because I don't think the community's gonna put up with it, and I'm certainly not gonna put up with it. We need to move to natural gas, as they had promised at the beginning when I first began talking with them. And they have honored their commitment. And a number of those, like I said, a number of those stacks now are operating on natural gas. Others are still coal-fired, and we still have to work on that. But again, in this environment, this political environment, especially locally and nationally, you know, the concerns that we have, the concerns that I have as somebody that has taken that seat, that has the experience and the skill to know how to maneuver through a lot of these things. Every year that I was on the city council, I was holding anywhere from six to eight town halls a year. And those town halls are critical to me for two reasons. One, to receive feedback from the community as to what they're seeing and what they need, what the needs are, what's going unaddressed, those kinds of things. But more importantly, or just as important as that, to me, is providing information. And I'll give you an example. We had people who weren't aware that with property taxes, if you don't pay your property taxes for three years, somebody's, your property taxes are going to be paid, whether you pay them or not. If you don't pay them, a tax certificate holder's gonna pay them. And if for three years consecutively you don't pay your taxes, your property taxes, that tax certificate holder can take your house. I needed people to understand that. So I had several town hall meetings just to deal with property taxes, so that people are aware that you can't go for a significant period of time without paying at least a portion of your property taxes. You gotta pay something on that. Another thing was some of the violence that was going on in the community. So I had, we had a spike. And so I had, I put together a town hall, you know, for people to, you know, talk about what the concerns are as they see them, as relates to some of the violence that had gone on at that particular time. But to answer your question more specifically, every, every year that I was on the council, I would have anywhere from six to eight town hall meetings a year. That was my connection to the community, and the connection, the community can always call. Everybody, including gang members, has my cellphone number. So, you know, it's not, it's not unusual for me to get calls. As a matter of fact, while I wasn't on the council, I was still getting phone calls. People wanted me to do this, to do that, and I would try to say, "Well, call your council person." But I recognized that, you know, some things that, some things I needed to take care of. And so I still got calls, and I still had things that I did for people very quietly here in the community still, because it's important to continue to be a player, whether you're an elected official or not.
Especially when you got the connections.
When you got the connections, when you got the connections, you have an obligation to do it. Well, you know, before I left the council, we, I had joined the county in an effort for the Juvenile Justice Center. And that Juvenile Justice Center was supposed to, now they're playing political games with it, the county is, and I'm very frustrated about that. But at the end of the day, what that Juvenile Justice Center was supposed to do, it housed CASA, it housed a number of supportive organizations for young people and their families. And that was, that was what the intent of that was. We've also looked at building other facilities, like Radius over on 50th and Grand Street for young people. We're looking at a couple of other builds as well that are gonna take place. Let me give you a little history, though. We had, used to have Beatrice. We used to have Richard Young. We used to have a number of facilities for those who had mental issues or substance abuse issues. But a number of them had mental issues. When the governor at that time decided to close those facilities, we kept telling and saying to them, "You're gonna regret the day that you do that, because you're gonna have to build more, because mental health is more of an issue than you think it is." And at the end of the day, here we sit, having to build more because what happened in the past, people with short-sighted vision, who wanted to save some money, closed those facilities, didn't think mental health was a major issue, and here we are now, addressing what we know is a significant issue with mental health. We're trying to address it now in a more holistic way, bringing people together, collaborations and partnerships again, you know, but at the end of the day, we gotta build some buildings to house mental health facilities. And that's something I would like to continue to oversee and watch as we continue to develop those, because mental health is a really strong key issue here, as well as behavioral health. You know, we've gotta address those things, and we gotta address them before the people end up in the penitentiary, as opposed to after. The Juvenile Justice Center is a place to hold young people, but it's a place to hold young people and get them services immediately. That's the intent, to have them in and out in a period of time, because every time these kids stay, it costs taxpayers significant tax dollars to keep people incarcerated. We want to get people out as soon as possible and save those tax dollars, and get them the services that they need, so that we're not spending a whole lot of tax dollars and we're not wasting time providing the support that young people need. You haven't heard anything about it, because people want to complain about it, rather than look at it holistically and talk about, rather than talk about what we don't have, let's talk about what we do and the things that we don't, let's build on those. But the intent of that Juvenile Justice Center was to provide various services, mental health, behavioral health, substance abuse, all kinds of things. We were, that was supposed to be kind of what you would consider to be a one-stop-shop, okay? That would provide all the services, including probation services. You know, all of those services were to be in that one building. And the fact that we're playing games with it now bothers me greatly, but I will continue to, I will continue going down that road, because it's necessary for the safety and security of our community, first of all, but more importantly, the safety and security of our young people. We began with the Summer Jobs Program, okay? That's a million dollars a year that we contribute to the Step Up Summer Jobs Program. We added another nearly million dollars to Heartland Workforce Solutions to create various programs, including one that I'm particularly proud of, it's called the CRED Program. And that's where we reached down into generationally unemployed people. Their grandmother was unemployed, their mother was unemployed, their daughter was unemployed, those kinds of things. And so we've reached down and with that particular program, and we've got a number of people that, some of them have never held a job before, who have been on the job for a year or longer now going through this program. So we've been able to do another million dollars for that. Now you gotta keep in mind, you know, budget battles are always a fight. You know, I mean, you always gotta go in and prove your case. Okay? We were able to prove the case for Step Up Summer Jobs. We were able to prove the case for traditionally unemployed individuals, as well as individuals who are unemployed now, especially young people who are unemployed. We were able to make some inroads in that and provide some dollars, but that didn't come without significant discussion and sometimes debate. So you've got to be aggressive when you see things that need to be done and need to be addressed financially through the city budget. I mean, you gotta be aggressive about those things, but you also have to work with the mayor as well. And you have to look at the various pots of money that are out there. What do we need to continue with our contingency liability accounts and so forth? What do we need to do with Planning Department, with Public Works? Do we need to increase budgets? All of those kinds of things. So you gotta look at the internal workings of city government first to make sure that you're providing the necessary needs that the community has come, has become used to having. But in addition to that, you have to look at other things as well, if you're gonna have a healthy community. And among those things are addressing unemployment, addressing adult unemployment, addressing young people unemployment, as well as Summer Jobs Program and other things that we do. It's important to make sure that we do those things. Short-term, I agree with that. And the reason I agree with that is because the police department, like other police departments around this area, are fighting for personnel, you know? And when you're fighting for personnel, you've gotta, you've gotta provide some sort of incentive that'll get you over, that'll get, that'll get people more coming in your direction than going into your competitors' direction. And when we're talking about competitors, we're talking about the Sheriff's Department, we're talking about other police areas around here, Valley, Greton, all these police departments are looking for people. So, yeah, you've gotta, you've gotta do some things to attract people to come to your, come to your particular department. So you gotta do those things. But you have to look at this department differently, because this department doesn't operate like other departments does. This is a truly community-driven kind of effort here. They have a third, the police chief says that they have a third, a third, and a third, a third enforcement, a third involvement in addressing violent crime before it gets to that point, and a third working with mental health facilities. They have embedded in the police department several mental health workers that go on calls with the police department when they, when it is determined through 911 or other sources that the call that they're going on might have a mental health component to it. So, and I'll give you an example, I was over in, over on, just behind- So, and I give you an example, I, I was over in, over on, just by a place in, in North Omaha where we had a, a woman who was, you know, living by herself and people described her maybe as a hoarder. And you know, police were called, I was called, I went out one night. And when I got there, I, I saw the police officer, I saw the sergeant standing by his car, but I also saw Lutheran Family Services and I also saw the Humane Society. So while the police officer was there, the action was being done by Lutheran Family Services and the Humane Society, addressing the animals that were in the house, addressing the, the problem, mental health condition of the individual. And the police officer was just there to keep the peace. And I told him, well, there's, doesn't see a need for me to be here. So you know, I kind of left because it was well in hand. The police had their responsibility, Lutheran Family Services had their responsibility, the Humane Society had their responsibility, and everybody carried it out to the, to a successful end. One of the things I think we need to do, and I'm looking for ways to do that financially, is to make sure that we have five area neighborhood associations. Okay? The North Omaha Neighborhood Alliance and others. We, we ought to be finding a way to fund some of the things that they do. And I know we already do that through grants and so forth, but I think more to maintaining the status of those organizations with a budget, with a person in charge that's constantly monitoring the neighborhoods in North Omaha. I think we need to do that. And I think we need to find some resources to make sure that these neighborhoods are healthy, but that they're operating at peak efficiency. You know, transportation issues as a whole is one that, again, is one of those things that I would want to work closely with the city's new effort, you know, their new board in terms of transportation. But in terms of the, the bus system and the, and the potential rail system that's coming, you would have to work collaboratively with, we have a young lady on the council, Ms. Domback, who can, who, who's on the metro area transit board. We work through those. I mean, again, we don't try to get in somebody's backyard and tell them how to do things. What we do is work with the people that are on the board and let them carry the water for us in terms of what we need in North Omaha. And you support that. And when she raises an issue, it is our obligation to be there to support her on that issue. So that's how I would do it. I wouldn't, I wouldn't force myself into somebody's backyard, but what I would do was work collaboratively with them to make sure that, you know, they understand what the issues are and I, as a council member, be supportive of them when they address those issues. Well, let me tell, first of all, you know, one of the things that I wanted to do when I got on the council as well, was to create a, a arts, culture and entertainment district and to get it on the National Register of Historic Places. We've done that from 22nd to 26th, from Patrick to Ohio Street. That is a, that's historically designated, that's a federal historic designation. That was one of the things that I wanted to happen because when you do that, it puts you in, it puts you on a different plane and it gives you more of a, of an opportunity to gain federal, state and county dollars if you're in a historic district. So having that designation puts us in a good place in terms of continuing to build our econ, our entertainment, our culture, our arts and so forth in this community. It does that through having that designation, but also continuing to do the work necessary to shine the light on what's going on here and what we can improve on. Diversity always helps. It never hurts. Diversity always helps. Inclusion always helps. Because when you don't have it and you're, you're aboard trying to make, trying to figure out what you want to do, if there are voices missing, then what you do a lot of times is ineffective and in some cases inappropriate. Because you know, when you, when you don't include those voices, you make mistakes and you do more damage. Now, there are people that I understand who want to do that damage, who want to turn the clock back. Just then, yeah, I'm going to talk about that. We cannot allow people to do illegal things. We can't allow courts to go unchecked. We can't allow people to continue to step on our rights and eliminate DEI simply because white men think it's a good thing to do. The other thing that happens when we're, and when I'm out of town and I'm in Tulsa and New Orleans and other places like that and watching the books that have been banned, I know why the caged bird sings. Come on. Are we, are we serious? You know, and that's just the tip of the iceberg. You know, there are books outcast, all of the works of Maya Angelou. She's a poet. We don't want to hear poetry. White men don't want to hear poetry. That's nonsense. I'm serious. I'm, I'm, I'm going to talk about this for a minute because what is happening in Washington DC right now and some of what is happening in Lincoln, those things are illegal. But they're getting away with it because we don't understand or know the constitution. We don't understand or know what the obligations are of city, state and federal government. You got a president now, you can't, come on, man. You cannot write a, you can't not write an executive order eliminating the 14th Amendment to the constitution? How ridiculous and crazy is that? You know, you can't do that kind, you can't do the mass firings that are going on right now with, with, with individuals without some sort of due process. We have due process rights in this country that are being eviscerated by state and federal government. And they know what they're doing and they know it's illegal and they know it's wrong, but they believe that the community is so anemic and so uninformed that they don't know what the rules are. I do, and I'm going to be talking about that a lot.